We'll call attendance, please.
Walker.
Here.
Deick.
Here.
Froyen.
Here.
Mack, Absinthe, Maycomber.
Here.
Connect.
Here.
And Agenda Item Two is reading of the District Mission Statement by Director Froyen.
Our mission is to engage, inspire, and empower students and staff in order to maximize.
Thank you. Agenda Item Three is approval of the agenda. Any additions or corrections?
No changes.
Any motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented, please.
Second.
A motion is second to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Agenda Item Four is to welcome the visitors and receive public comment. Is there anyone that wishes to make public comments tonight? Okay, move on to Agenda Item Five, comments by Board members and superintendent.
Couple things. Congratulations to our newest alumni at the Charles City High School. We had ceremonies at Cary Lane on Saturday and the Charles City High School on Sunday. Also want to mention and thank Fallon Connect for her services. Our student board member, this is her last meeting, so thank you for your contributions this school year.
I wanted to say thank you also for the opportunity to do this. It's come a lot.
I look forward to seeing you on a school.
I also thank you, and I hope that, you know, your participation has hopefully convinced someone else to take your place next year and that we can continue this tradition. I think it's kind of a fun one that offers some opportunity for students and a great experience. So, thank you for the time. It's a lot of time, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's worth it.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think we all echo those thoughts, so thanks Fallon.
Also, thank you also.
Any additional comments?
I heard some great comments about how comfortable it was again to have the ceremony in the Comet Gym. I think I observed about three people doing this, but I decided it wasn't fanning heat, it was fanning away tears. So, I just wanted to pass that along to everybody who are glad we made that choice and what we did was reinforced yesterday also.
Yeah, absolutely.
Graduation.
Okay, Agenda Item Six is the new superintendent.
So, Mike Fisher, who is the current principal of Hoover Middle School, is here on hand. He and his wife Sarah and their son Joshua will be moving to Charles City soon, sometime this summer, and this is just an opportunity for us to say welcome to Mike, and if he wants to step to the microphone and make any comments, this certainly would be the time to do that.
Well, it's exciting. I was out in the hallway talking to the realtor, so we're trying to get an offering on a house. About a week from being homeless, but no, we're just thrilled to be accepted in the Charles City community, call this home. Just came up a little early. It was just drive around, it still strikes me how beautiful the town is and how progressive this community is in education. It's been so welcoming already. Been up around in several businesses and be up here Thursday, meet lots of people, so just can't wait to start.
Awesome. Thanks, Mike.
Any additional comments on that from board members?
Waiting for the first of July.
Yep. I think we've all individually publicly welcomed you and privately welcomed you and appreciated the time that you've given us already, and the time to get you on your feet going forward here until we get to the first July. And like we've mentioned, you've got a lot of time scheduled to be here, you know, at your own expense, I'll say, prior to your contract start date, which speaks loudly to all of us. We're really excited about that opportunity to get you going before then, and I know you'll hit the ground running and be hard to keep up, I'm guessing.
It's only been a week, I realize, but it feels like it's been a month.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Dr. Cox and I talk daily right now, which is exciting, so.
Awesome, excellent.
And for our audience tuning in on Thursday morning, KCHA, Mr. Fisher and Board President Walker will be on the morning show roughly 8:05, so, and you'll be, Mr. Fisher will be out and about meeting stakeholders that day as well, so.
Great day, queen. Excellent. Agenda Item Seven is the PE presentation.
Our entire department is here, so I don't know who's taking the microphone first.
Well, you all are.
And I did not come dressed for calisthenics, so don't go there.
Yeah.
Just remind you that, you know, our audience at home can't hear unless you're at the microphone, so when it is your turn to talk, if you'd step up to the mic, we appreciate that.
So, this is my slide. I'm Amy Johnson, by the way, Health and PE at the high school and middle school. And one of my big takeaways was the health sessions that I went to because I'm the only health teacher in the district, so I kind of bounce ideas off myself all the time. So, it was nice to have some connections made there and some resources that I could use and take into my classroom. And actually, the two gals that were in charge of the session, I've been in communication with them ever since. They live out on the East Coast, and so they've been helping me out a lot. I went and bought their book immediately after the session because it was so good. But, so what it is, is it's the big push for skills-based health, and it's not just content where, okay, we're going to teach you about drugs and alcohol, and now you're going to take a quiz, and we're going to move on to something else. It's all about the skills-based problem-solving, decision-making, and those are the things that we need to push for so that we're testing skills and see how they do on the skills rather than, you know, how they do on a quiz and, you know, how much alcohol might be in a can of beer. So, it's all about decision-making and those kinds of things, and that's what we want. So, it was also very validating for me that session was because I wasn't sure if I was doing the right things, and it was just really good for me to know that I was on the right track. Okay, next slide. And maybe Steve, I put a little part in here for you too. So, in one of the general sessions, they talked about, they had, well, they had a big presentation of the school in Hawaii, and they had their kids do a PBL, and it was all week or all year long, and they created these videos, and then it ended up being turned into like a wellness fair that the kids put on. So, that's something that Steve and I have been talking about and maybe wanting to implement. Do you have anything you want to add on that one?
One.
Okay. So, that's kind of a project-based learning thing that we might do for Health and PE now, so.
All right, I'm Russ Haryaski, Middle School Physical Education. We spent the last couple years, three years, doing our, breaking down our standards. We have our ICAN statements for PE going along with their standards. So, for the first standard, I can demonstrate the skills necessary to participate in a variety of physical activities. Second one, I can apply knowledge I've learned for games to help teams be successful. I can participate in regulated physical activity. I can develop a plan to maintain a healthy lifestyle. I can participate safely in physical education. I can recognize and include those who have a higher or lower skill level. I can follow the rules, demonstrate respect, and use good sportsmanship while playing games, and I can describe the benefits of involvement in various types of physical activities. So, all those things, we try to reach with all of the different activities that we do in our PE classes. When we do games, very heavy emphasis on sportsmanship, and I like to call it fair play, you know, where if I have a competitive advantage over somebody, I need to, not necessarily not try, but I need to make it so they have a chance to compete and succeed in the classroom setting. It's different from a competitive sport. Just, one of the things we always get at our, at our conferences, physical education and physical activity, evidence-based, effective physical education increases students' physical activity in a safe, supervised, structured environment and imparts the knowledge and skills they need to cultivate physically active lifestyles. Regular physical activity and physical fitness can play a significant role in promoting health and preventing chronic illnesses among those adults such as heart disease, cancer, type-two diabetes, and osteoporosis. Heart disease, I think, is the number-one killer of adults in the United States, and just about everything that leads to heart disease is directly improved by physical activity. So, it's, it's something that, there really isn't easy fix, if you want to call moving easy. For the conference, my, one of my big takeaways, a lot of good sessions there, but one of the takeaways, something I've talked in the past of doing, is trying to incorporate some of our more core subjects into PE, and one of the sessions was on how they review for their tests in Core by doing an active workout, and the kids would have test questions, either posted on the wall or, or on cards, and the kids would get the question, do an activity, and then move around the gym to find the answer or come up with the answer and then do another activity. So, you could set it up as a game with a number of different points. So, I'm trying to work on developing something like that for next year, and then I'll get together with the teachers for, probably start with one grade level, but eventually hopefully hit all the grade levels. So, if they have a test coming up, we can do some review in class, which again goes off some of our, our research-based evidence that we have that says when people exercise, they improve their learning skills and their memory skills. So, see if that'll do some help for some of those things. I'm talking a little bit, just kind of with Steve and I. Last year, we got the IHT Zones. It's a risk-based heart rate monitor. We use the zone in class, they're worn on the wrist. They measure the heart rate during class activities. Students and eventually parents can receive an email summary of daily workouts, and then the students analyze their workouts to plan future workouts. So, it's just kind of a work in progress. We've completed almost two years with them. Now, for the middle school, a year and a half, and the kids are getting used to wearing them and kind of figuring out what they need to do to get their heart rate up in the, in the zone where it's doing them the most good. At the middle school, we've gone to the Fitness Gram, fitness testing. So, twice a year, we test the kids on the Pacer Test, which is kind of replaced the mile, otherwise known as the beep test. They run 20 meters. They have a certain amount of time between beeps to complete it, and then they have to turn around. So, it's a continuous test. Every, every minute then, the time they have gets a little bit shorter. I think at the middle school here, the highest number we've had a kid get to is 111 laps on that, which I think is down to just over five seconds a lap after running for, I don't know, nine or 10 or 11 minutes. So, it's, it's a pretty, pretty strenuous task. Then we also do the sit and reach for flexibility, curl-ups for strength, push-ups for strength, modified pull-ups for strength, and then we also do, when we can fit it in, we also do the mile run. Some of the kids ask for it, some of the kids don't like that, but it, it's one that I'm trying to get the middle schoolers especially to understand that it's a mile. It's not like you're doing a death march or something like that, and that's been kind of a transformation the years that I've been here, where I think when I started, after the mile, a lot of kids end up in the office because they weren't feeling well, and we've kind of gotten that down to now where very few kids feel like they have to do that. They survive the mile. So, the attitude is changing a little bit.
Hi, I'm Steve Stahl Smith from the high school. They pretty much covered everything. I have nothing else to say, but actually, the last two conferences that we went to is really what happened with our curriculum change or a new curriculum with the heart rate monitors. It was one of those things where we went, saw, saw something, did it physically up there in Minneapolis when we went, and I came back and I told Josh, I said, "I think this will be very good for our school and our kids." Now, Fallon could probably speak for it because she was in the curriculum and how it works. The revamping of it, every kid comes in now and they have a daily goal of activity, and it goes from, on Monday, we have a personal workout where they've got to get their heart rate up to a certain amount, a percentage of their threshold heart rate, and then Tuesday's a little bit easier. It's an open activity day. They, I want them to do something with somebody else. Wednesday is a teacher-led workout. Now, I don't really lead them, I'm explaining what we want them to do to get their heart rate up. And then Thursday's a game day. We take it down a little bit on the, on the daily goal again, and then Friday, we bring it up again. So, if you're doing a weekly workout, like you might go to the Y or Snap Fitness or Health Quest or something, we're trying to get them in the mode to be able to do those different types of things, whether it be individually or in a team atmosphere in a game situation. I have really tried to go to the next step, going back to the slide with Hawaii. The video that they had was a, like the final that they have. They, they take a first assessment, a pre-assessment, and a post-assessment, and they document in video with through the whole year, and then they turn it in as their final. I've been collaborating back and forth with Hawaii, people that did that presentation. I was kind of hoping, you know, I mean, heck, might as well go there and see if we can hook up with them. What's San Diego? We just go to Hawaii. They're, they're very much in tune with what we want to do here. We're trying to get a, the next step, we're trying to get is an independent PE program, trying to fit in with the kids that have a full schedule, and I think most of those kids are the ones that are in chorus and band, and then they have a full academic schedule. Josh has been very, very good in working, or working with me and saying, "Yeah, I think we can do this and that and the other thing," and we're, we're going to take that leap of faith next year and hopefully have an independent PE program and, and see how it works. So, the last two conferences we went to, it's kind of changed over the last five years what the heck we've been doing at, at the high school at least, and leading in with the middle school. Thank you.
And one more thing to add about the IHT system. So, actually, that's a really neat system where we can track everything from fifth through 12th grade, so we have it all in one spot. And then we're also able to track, like, grand totals for fifth through 12th grade, and what was it? How many calories we burned? 1.5 million throughout just this school year? No, that was just up until the conference, which was in February. So, fifth, no, and it's not. It's seventh through 12th grade, we built, we burned 1.5 million calories. So, that was pretty cool to see that. And then the app also. So, last summer, our Charles City crew was part of the development for the IHT Spirit System app, and then we were actually the first school in the state of Iowa to use the app in the school setting. So, that was very exciting.
Sue Hofer, I do every building except the high school, so kindergarten through sixth grade PE. And first of all, I appreciate, I just, for all of us, the opportunity to go to the national conference this year and the last one too. It's, it is the most fun conference you could ever go to because you just get together with a bunch of PE teachers and play and learn new games. So, we have a lot of fun, and so I appreciate the chance that we had to go do that and learn some things. With elementary PE, my focus these past few years has been just simply getting the kids moving and sweating. They come out of PE classes on a daily basis dripping in sweat, from whether we're working on skills-based to fitness stuff, all the statistics out there and childhood obesity, they're alarming, and so I figure the 30 minutes I get them, or 40 minutes at Lincoln, I'm going to get them as much exercise during that time as possible. And so, I went to a lot more of the PE for elementary, obviously, and, you know, the best thing coming out of there is you've got the Teacher of the Year programs that come together and literally for an hour and a half, one teacher pops up, puts a game out there, you play it, you move on to another one, and you walk out of there with about 20 different games to take back to your school. So, that was one thing that I came out of the conference with. A couple other things is Alexis Finder, who teaches music at the elementary. She and I are going to try and get organized kind of a family fun dance night, combining music and physical education together. Many of you here remember back to the square dance days in high school, and that's something we don't necessarily do, and I don't think square dance is where we want to go because we want to make it life-applicable. But, we sat down just this past week brainstorming line dances and, and things that we want the kids to learn, and then bring parents in and, and have a fun night together with that. So, we're in the process of starting the ball rolling on that. And then another session that I went to was about after-school programs. Having done fitness testing, I do third and fourth grade fitness testing. We do it a little different than they do, but there's some alarming things there, like we do a one-minute sit-up test, and I have a couple kids that in one minute can't get more than 10 sit-ups, and that's kind of alarming. And so, trying to get an after-school program that would focus towards those kids, and I'm not exactly sure what that looks like just starting to, to get with that. Our, our active kids, they're doing what they need to do. They're involved in the YMCA programs. They're out playing on traveling game, traveling teams, all that stuff. The kid that can only do four sit-ups, how can I and we get them into a program that's going to help them? Because it doesn't matter how much they learn, if they walk out of our school not fit physically, they could be the smartest one out there, but that's not going to get them very far in life. And so, we talk a lot about that in third and fourth grade, and so that's another thing that I'm attempting to get started. I don't know exactly what it's going to look like yet, but spending some of those hours that you guys, that we have here between now and the end of the year to hopefully have something in place for next year when the kids come back.
So, we just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to let us go to the conference because it's really, it's just an awesome experience every time we've been able to go. And luckily in Nashville, we had some rocking chairs for my colleagues to sit in when they needed a break.
Comments or questions?
I think as a student last year, it's a really good idea. And yeah, so a lot of people don't like to participate in like gym sometimes, it's like outside of school. That's when they do it. So, I think it's a really good idea.
Well, I just wanted to say, Mrs. Hofer, I've got a third grader, and she was on the Comet Connection with Mr. Hofer a couple of weeks ago, and he asked what her favorite subject was, and she said gym because it's fun and she gets to play a lot of games, and she comes home constantly and tells me about the fun games that you guys are playing in there. So, good job to all of you guys. Yeah, I'm excited to see the family dance night. I think that sounds like a great idea, too.
I'm looking forward to it this year, you'll be there.
Yep.
Well, as with all of these things, you know, we always extend a thank you to our staff that take the time out of their personal lives to go and attend stuff like this, you know, for professional development that we all, all of our kids, all of our students get to benefit from. So, I know these trips can be fun and different things like that, but it's, it really is a time commitment to, on your behalf, you know, on your, your part to do this, so, on the school's behalf. So, I greatly appreciate that, and the board certainly appreciates that. So, and thank you for coming tonight, for sure to let us know about it and fill us in. So, thank you. Thanks. Agenda Item Eight is the Confidential Secretary's Handbook.
Negotiations committee has met. They have recommended an hourly rate increase of 41 cents per hour, which is comparable to the salary increase for our other four groups.
Any comments or questions?
Move to approve the confidential secretary's salary increase of 41 cents per hour and the confidential secretary handbook for 2018-19.
Motion is second to approve a confidential secretary's salary increase of 41 cents per hour and the confidential secretary handbook for 2018-19. Any additional comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Agenda Item Nine, Program Coordinators, Directors, and Administrator Handbook.
So, the handbook is one of the exhibits you were given. They're all grouped together, these three groupings, and the recommendation is to approve it as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the handbook for Program Coordinators, Directors, and Administrators as recommended.
I'll second.
Motion is second to approve the handbook for Program Coordinators, Directors, and Administrators as recommended. Any additional comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Agenda Item Ten is Program Coordinators.
So, we've got the following people in the Program Coordinators, our Juvenile Court Liaison Officer, the Communications and Community Engagement, Transition Alliance Program Coordinator, Homeschool Assistance Program Coordinator, our Charles City Alternative Academic Program Supervisor and Technology Assistant, and then Grant Paid Programs.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the salaries and hourly rate increases for the Program Room Coordinator's positions as recommended.
I'll second.
Motion is second to approve the salary and hourly rate increases for the Program Room Coordinator positions as recommended. Any additional comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Agenda Item Eleven is the Director Contracts.
We have three directors, our Director of Buildings and Grounds and Transportation, the Business Manager, and the Technology Director.
Move to approve the 2018-19 Director salaries as recommended.
I'll second.
Motion is second to approve the 2018-19 Director salaries as recommended. Any additional comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Agenda Item Twelve is the first reading of Policy 905.1, the Building Use Policy.
So, our Buildings and Grounds Committee has met and proposed some changes to Policy 905.1, Community Use of School District Facilities and Equipment, and then the elimination of 905.1E1, which was the form that you would fill out. Now, that's all online, so we don't need that as a separate document. The changes simplify and standardize the fees charged outside groups for use of district facilities. The policy will charge a fee for building use to all outside entities. It's a flat fee of $25 per hour for zero to four hours, $50 an hour for four-plus on Saturdays, Sundays, or time outside of regular working hours for staff.
Any comments or questions here? I think we determined this wouldn't necessarily result in any particular substantial increase for any group that we've had history with, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve the first reading of Board Policy 905.1, 905.1R1, 905.1R2, Community Use of School District Facilities and Equipment, and delete 905.1E1 as recommended.
I'll second.
Motion is second to approve the first reading of Board Policy 905.1, 905.1R1, 905.1R2, Community Use of School District Facilities and Equipment, and delete 905.1E1 as recommended. Any additional comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Agenda Item Thirteen is the At-the-Board Table.
So, you've got a document that I handed out ahead of time. I'm going to go back and plug in my computer and walk through this at the board table. This is part of the board's goal that they approved at the beginning of the academic year to achieve the Better Boardsmanship Award. Everyone will earn five Better Boardsmanship Award credits, and we're getting close to it. President Walker will hit the required mark today. Others are really close to being done, so as a team, it's looking good that we'll achieve that goal again this year. So, let me quickly get this set up for you. All right, so we did Whose Job Is It Anyway, Part One. I think two years ago, this is the Part Two portion of that. So, I'll have Mr. Wolf advance. So, this is an overview real quick. It's a consideration of the board's role in three parts. So, there's a discussion of a scenario and a consideration of what areas of work might need to be done, a consideration of some sample-specific tasks, determination of what the role of the whole board is versus the superintendent and others, the role that they would play, and a brief statement on the board's role in school improvement. So, we're going to consider those in that order. So, our scenario. So, as the board reads the following, ask yourself these questions. What areas of work might emerge as needing to be done in this situation, and that should be on page three, the short scenario, and what actions might need to be taken to lead the district forward? So, here's our scenario. Dreamfield School Board, which you may remember from a couple of years ago, has been hearing a lot about the need to make sure that students graduate college and career-ready. They also learned that staff leadership recently identified literacy as an area of student need after studying district assessment data results. So, there's the scenario that we're going to be looking at. Next slide, please. The board then read a portion of the Iowa Core that describes the literacy skills of students who are college and career-ready in reading, writing, speaking, and listening, and language. After much discussion, the board decided to make improved literacy as a district-wide student learning goal for the next two to five years in Dreamfield, our imaginary school district. district. All students will be college and career-ready in reading, writing, speaking, listening and language. Now they're asking themselves, what actions or areas of work might we, the school board, look for that would indicate that something is being done in working toward this goal? Why would they ask themselves that question? Chime in if you have a response. You have to participate to get your five points, too. Everyone has to talk at some point tonight.
Certainly to measure progress, you know, you look into what, anything that is implemented, figure out why, you know, what it is and how you can measure that progress if you're working to achieve that goal.
Sure. All right, we'll click on the orange box to see IASB thoughts on possible actions. Yeah, click on that box, actually. So, some thoughts on possible actions that the school board might take. Analysis of data to focus the goal, so can we work on reading, writing, speaking and listening and language all at the same time? That's five big areas. What's the greatest student learning need within the literacy content areas? Secondly, they might ask themselves, what does college and career-ready look like involving staff? So does the staff see this as, see the need for this to be a district-wide focused goal? And how can they gain ownership? Because it's one thing for the board to say this is important, but how are staff involved in that as well? Choosing an initiative and staff actions, so what initiative, what staff actions would best lead the district toward achieving that literacy goal that the board has adopted? Some areas of work that might be considered, selecting appropriate professional development to implement the initiative or staff actions, so what training and support, like this national PE conference that you just heard about. So what training and support do teachers need to improve instruction and student learning in our goal area of literacy? And then creating indicators of progress to monitor how well the initiative or staff development is working. So how will you know how well staff development is actually being implemented across the district? All good questions that a board might ask. They also might consider creating indicators of progress to monitor the impact on student learning. So how will we know the progress that we're making? I think about our district strategic action plan that we have, strategic goals for the district, and we've got markers that, all right, by this year we'll hit this and by the following year, and they're incremental so that you know, getting from 2017 to 2022, how we're gonna get to the desired state for each of the five big areas that the goal, that the board adopted. Another area to consider, monitoring, excuse me, the progress indicators regularly, so when and how will you learn about progress through presentations like you just did from our PE teachers? And now we get to the Whose Job Is It? And you should be experts at this by now, but let's see how well we do on whose job it is, the board, administration, teachers, so, yep. Discuss what college and career-ready really involves and what does that have to do with fourth graders? So whose job is that? Give you a moment to think, and then we'll click to see what Iowa Association of School Board says to that. So discussing what college and career-ready really involves and what it has to do with fourth graders. Any answers you want to give before we see what IASB says?
Teachers.
Probably the fourth grade team would be more of an expert than we would be.
I would agree with that.
Let's see what IASB says. Board-team discussion is what they say. And here's why they say that, this would be a great discussion to have at the board table, along with your district staff leadership, so your elementary principals, perhaps the entire administrative team. It would really help the board develop a shared understanding of what that goal truly means and how it might be related to their current situation as a district. So what is college and career-ready look like at fourth grade? A great discussion for all of us to have. The board could review research, they could provide experience from their own education and career to determine some policy-level descriptions of what the outcomes of this goal might look like. So certainly involving your fourth grade teachers, fourth grade principal, but involving your board members as well, looking at that 30,000-foot level of what does that look like?
So question.
Yes.
If you could back up one slide, please. The board could review research.
Yeah, that sounds like...
So am I tasked then with finding the research?
No.
Or do, okay, because see, when I read that, then it makes me think that we'll be finding the research, and I would say no.
Right.
We have administrators and fourth grade teachers who should be pulling the appropriate research for us to review.
Exactly.
Okay.
I would concur with that.
And I would also make the comment that, just as the presentation was with the PE teachers, that this would not be a great discussion, it would be a great presentation because I would not possibly have much to offer because that's not my area expertise. I don't mind being informed and being told about what's going on, but I can't turn around and tell you what you should probably consider.
Sure. You would have some insights as to college and career-ready for just reading in general, like what do we expect our kids to graduate with, so what might be appropriate at a little bit lower level, but I could understand the hesitation, too, of that's not my arena, I'd love to hear presentations, I'd love to hear from our teachers, from our principals, but help getting back toward that policy level of if this is our big goal as a district, okay, what can I do as a board member? And then what goes back to staff, as Scott was talking about. All right, identify what data will need to be studied to narrow the goal within the literacy content areas, so whose job would that be? And then determining where Dreamfield is in relation to that focused goal. So who should identify the data to be studied as we think about becoming college and career-ready for our fourth graders or across the district? Let's advance and we'll see what they...
Administrator, staff.
Yeah. Exactly. Administration and staff will have ideas on how to organize the data to give you, the board, an accurate picture as to what it looks like. The board can ask good questions about the data, clarify how it relates to the goal, but you're right, the people who would be doing that focusing work would be either your administrators or your teachers. Good. Study options and select the initiative or actions that staff will implement to improve instruction. So whose task is that? Looking at what options there are, what teachers are going to do that will result in increased student learning in the focused literacy goal area.
Administrator, staff.
Same answer.
Yeah.
So administration and staff will study the options, review research, select the initiative or actions that staff will learn about and implement. Now the board can work with staff leadership, so with your administrative team, to learn about what the initiatives are and to set the parameters for the actions, like it has to be a proven track record, it can't just be something that sounds good but it has no substance. All teachers can implement the action, so, you know, that's where the board can weigh in, but you're right, it really would be probably more with that administration and staff board on the big picture part of that. Whose job is this? Identify the amount of professional development time that staff will need to learn the skills or strategies to implement that initiative and actions and compare that need to the existing professional development time allocated in the school calendar.
Administration.
How much time we're gonna give to teachers to really dive in and become better versed in this?
Administration.
Administration. So administration and staff will determine that amount. Administration and staff would also compare the time needed to the amount of professional development currently allocated each year. And that's something we talk about every winter, spring, as we get to our calendar discussions, that's one of the things that teachers are asking, all right, how many professional learning days are we going to have, where do we structure them? Admin team is always asking about that, too, thinking ahead to what's the next thing that we need to be implementing, going deeper with, and how much time that will require. Next question, oh, excuse me. The board could learn about time-related support needs and take appropriate action, so for example, you could approve a recommendation from the superintendent to adapt the school calendar that has a different amount of professional learning days, early release time, we used to have late starts on Wednesdays for that purpose, adding more staff development days, et cetera, so we'll hit that one. Whose job would be this? Developing talking points to share with the community about the importance of additional staff development time, whether it's early dismissals, et cetera, to help teachers strengthen instruction and ensure that students graduate college and career-ready. So talking points, big picture things for the community.
Continue on with the administration and staff.
Okay. They might get you a curveball on this one with the board.
Well, logistic.
Because this is where you, as a board, could jump in and say, all right, this is why, like when we had the calendar that had Wednesday late start days, there was a school board that adopted that and said, this is what we're doing, we're investing in this time, this is why we've chosen to start Wednesdays late, so those talking points can be developed at the board table. You're right, administration and staff are gonna help with that as well. It'll also be, talking points will be based on your understanding, your shared understanding of college and career readiness, and that may run the gamut here, you may know very little, you may know a whole lot about that topic, and the need for more professional learning time for us to hit that goal. All right.
For some of us, it's been longer than others.
True, and that's okay. Board's role. All right, so before you continue, let's discuss these questions as a group. In general, how would you describe the board's role in relation to improving student learning? What thoughts do you have on that?
Providing the avenues for teacher training, teacher leadership.
Proving curriculums.
Helping to find the money in the budget or allocate money for faculty and staff to go out and learn themselves along with that professional development time.
And setting district goals.
And speaking of that, you know, we have been very intentional the last two years, maybe three, I'm not, I'd have to go back and see, about putting the board goal as it relates to every agenda item, to just keep in front of you, here's the actions that you're taking tonight, and here's what they relate to when it comes to the big five goals that we have. And then it also relates to the Iowa Association of School Board goals or standards for effective boards as well, just to make sure that you're seeing that tie-in between your role with student learning and what appears before you on an agenda. So describe in general terms what your board team sees as your various roles to ensure that all children learn at high levels. What role do you see for yourself?
Seriously, needs a multiple choice.
You get open-ended on all of these.
It's, you know, it's a, it's just putting the structure in place that's to make them successful, you know, making sure from the top down, we've got, again, clear goals identified, a structure in place to evaluate those, the effectiveness of the programs that are put in place and if we're meeting those goals or not at all, at all levels.
Making sure we have administration in place that is gonna ensure those higher levels learning.
Setting those expectations and...
And holding...
Holding them accountable.
Exactly.
If we don't have a school calendar that, if next year's school calendar is three days shorter in professional learning, I'd say we take it back and tell you to put them back in, or make you accountable as to why have you removed that? If we want teachers to learn so that students can learn more and better, why would you take that away from the people who are in the trenches, on the front line, in the classroom? It's all important. So I mean, that's the 30,000-foot level I see is if something changes from what we're used to or what our goals have been, we need to hold administration accountable to say, why did that change and why can't we put it back in to continue on with the progress?
The next agenda item, when we finish with this, is, you know, appointments. Again, board's role when we get to hiring good staff, you know, we're gonna recommend people to you, but the board ultimately is saying yes, and that all ties back into ensuring that all kids have access to a high-quality education. How can the board team make a significant difference in student learning by demonstrating active leadership while operating at a governance level? And I think you probably hit on some of these things as well. When you talk about the structure, the policy, and staying at that 30,000-foot level, looking at things globally, and then making sure that the people who are empowered to do the work are doing the work.
Well, we continue to have these types of sessions so that we learn.
Exactly.
We continue to go to other seminars and IASB meetings so that we learn how to do our job better so that we can help everyone else in the district do their job better. It all relates.
Exactly. And just a handful of school boards make this commitment every year out of the 300-plus. All right, so Iowa Lighthouse Research Studies identify five main leadership roles of the board in improving student learning, along with some sample actions of the board within those roles, and we'll see what those are here over the next several slides. So setting clear expectations, which you've talked about, creating conditions for success, which you've already hit upon tonight, learning together as a board team, Scott was just referencing that, holding the system accountable for progress, you've talked about that, and building the collective will. So you've hit those five big areas that that research study has said this is an effective board and how they operate. So that concludes our Whose Job Is It Part Two session. Any final thoughts before we transition to the next agenda item?
I think some of this, over the time, because we all have sat here for, I know the three of us, and Missy, you being a parent, you've sat in the audience, that sometimes these are hard for us to answer because it just, it's just natural for the part of the job. We don't look at it and analyze it and pull it apart like that and say, it's just what happens.
Yeah.
And to pull it apart and come up with a specific answer to why we do it that way is because that's just the way we do it.
But it's good to reflect upon it every now and then to just keep in mind, why do you, as board members, do certain things versus administrators versus our staff?
As a new board member.
What are shared and what are separated.
Yeah, and as a new board member, I appreciate these, you know, at the board table sessions and also the access to webinars and things like that, too. You know, I think it helps, obviously, to understand things better or at least try, especially in finance, try to understand things better.
Sure.
Absolutely.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So agenda item 14 is consideration of the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion second to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Agenda item G corresponds, see here, corresponds miscellaneous, there to be any other than some board thank yous. H, important upcoming dates.
So tomorrow's our last day of school, dismissal at 11:20 at the elementary and 11:30 at the secondary. June 5th, final contract day for teachers. June 6th, we have a CIAC meeting at 5 o'clock at our Iowa Big North space, a regular board meeting back here on June 11th.
Excellent, and with that we will adjourn.